Will Commissioner Hodges please lead the invitation and pledge allegiance?
Thank you. Please rise. Our most gracious heavenly father, what a wonderful city you have given us to live in and to take care of and to be part of. We are asking your blessing on all the commissioners here tonight as well as those in attendance. We ask that you take care of all the citizens of Madeira Beach as we make decisions affecting Madeira Beach and all that live here. May we keep you front and center. It is in your name we do pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Your roll call.
Oh, sorry. Please, will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Black.
Present.
Vice Mayor Weinstein.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Oakley. Let the record show that Commissioner Douthier is absent tonight. His absence is approved.
And back to the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, before the board proceeds forward with approving the agenda, staff is requesting that Resolution 2018-013 establishing January 19th as the City of Madeira Beach Community Day of Good Deeds for that item to be pulled and placed on the agenda at the first regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners in November.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda with the correction to remove the Resolution 2018-13 to be placed on the first Board of Commissioners meeting in November.
There's also the agenda item D where the downtown market fee is to be moved.
Correct.
So I'll second it if you want to with the taking off the Resolution 2018-13 under unfinished business and also deleting or, yeah, deleting from this agenda number D under new business. Under new business, number nine. Okay. That's to be moved, the downtown market fee is to be moved back to the workshop on October 23rd.
Okay. Any discussion about that? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes. Next on the item, we have public comment. This is for anything that is not on this agenda. Please remember to state your full name and address, speak directly in a microphone, and above all, please remember to be civil and respectful.
John Hendricks, 569 Normandy Road, Madeira Beach. I wanted to comment on the email that most of the residents got about John's Pass Seafood Festival. How embarrassing that was to me as a resident of Madeira Beach that we've had another group that was putting on an event in Madeira Beach run the gauntlet of the city commission and the city management. Here's a lady, Sunny, that has worked endlessly even though she's fighting cancer and she's going through chemo and she's going through radiation, y'all continue to beat her down. She didn't get a copy of that contract until October 2nd. She was running out of time. Shame on you folks. If anyone owes anyone an apology, this city owes an apology to Sunny. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay.
All right. Finally, Stephen Barrett has come back to Madeira Beach from 11975 Third Street East, Island of Treasure, Florida, 33706-4547. What time did the city manager's office close yesterday, Jonathan? Just kidding. I'm just kidding. All right. Moderates of Madeira Beach, MOM, I call it the mom group. They say vote 2567. No. No. On 2567. Because they are counting on you three, well, we got one absent here, but they're counting on you three to lose the next commission election so they can fire the city manager, city clerk, city finance director, and the city lawyer. Hire back Shane and Cheryl Crawford. And it's hard to find a good lawyer. I have a good lawyer, me personally. Me and my lawyer, we mopped the floor with Shane and Officer Craig in their falsified police report. As far as I'm concerned, it cost me $750. That's chicken feed where I come from. He should probably be escorted out of here. He's interrupting me there.
Sorry.
Jerry Springer. I mean, Shane replied for his job after being resigned, after he resigned because of me. I made him, apparently, and at least that's what he told Bay News 9 and the Tampa Bay Times. Then he reapplied for his job as city manager while he was employed by the Feather Sound Country Club. Now, what a slap in the face to them. He already has a job, right, Commissioner Hodges? He already had a job at Feather Sound Country Club and he reapplied for his job here. What kind of a slap in the face is that? To have a job and then apply for a job while you already have that job. They were so grateful to him, you know? I mean, I don't know how I would vote, but I don't think I'd vote no as far as I'm concerned. And quite frankly, I don't know why he hasn't been arrested. He's embezzled money from the city of Madeira Beach. Has he embezzled money from Spiller Companies and Jesse James Gang Thing, James Gang Fishing charters? There's a tongue twister. You know, passed out city parking permits or maybe sold them. Was selling variances and permits maybe under the table for some cash, little envelope, you know? Forget the Chicago mob, what about the Madeira Beach mob? So this election's going to turn around a lot. So we'll see how it goes. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, you guys probably should have prosecuted him by now or had him arrested, you know? Prosecuted, charged, arrested, however, any order you want, you know? That's really all I had written, but I got a minute left. Oh, the Madeira Beach Marina Audit. I guarantee you, after this red tide passes by, and I may have floated in with second red tide, you know? You don't know. But I'm sure the numbers will show eventually that people in charge that aren't present right now were stealing, whether it be ice or going on their weekends with their friends, fishing lures, tackle, oil, you know? The numbers will show. The numbers never lie. You can laugh.
Please remain behind the podium.
Why can't I walk around?
Well, at least...
Stretching my legs.
Stretch them there.
Stretch them there. All right. Well, I guess that could be it. I mean, eh, for now. All right. Mahalo, Madeira Beach. Thank you all. And I'll see you again.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Public comment is now closed. Next on the... Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. I understand there's some corrections to the minutes.
Yes. On July 11th, I had the last name of Jimmy that owns the Delos's Pizza. I had his last name wrong and I don't know what it is. On August 14th, regular meeting, I had this, I accidentally put, we presented a $5,000 check for the toll event instead of 500, so I made that correction. That's 500.
That was on which date?
Ma'am.
The last one, what date was that?
And then on the August 28th, extraordinary was, put in a different word than extraordinary, so I replaced that.
Is that it? Okay, that's fairly minor then. I don't, city attorney, we don't need to vote on that since it's on the present agenda even though there were a few changes. Is that correct?
You can make a motion to approve the... An appropriate motion would be to approve the minutes with the changes noted by the clerk. Are the changes written in here or are they oral? Okay, then you can just make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Okay. Yes, I make a motion to approve the July 11th, 2018 through the September 25th, 2018, either workshop minutes or regular agenda as amended, wording on some of the meetings amended by the city clerk.
All right. Any discussion on the board? The floor is not open for public comment. Floor is closed. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Under unfinished business, we have Resolution 2018-16 rescinding Resolution 2018-15 parking waiver.
Madam Mayor, members of the Board of Commissioners, this item is to rescind previous action by the Board of Commissioners that suspended the fees for parking in city-owned lots to include parking passes and visitors' passes. Based on the conditions improving somewhat, staff is recommending rescinding the actions taken. In this resolution, if adopted by the Board of Commissioners, it also provides the latitude for the city manager to administratively suspend parking for a period of 72 hours in the event that the conditions worsen and then bring an item back to the board for additional legislative action. At this time, we're still working with representatives from Pinellas County as well as DRC Environmental and working diligently to ensure that fish, as they come ashore, are removed appropriately and that we're constantly in communications with the Health Department as far as the surveying of our beach and our water conditions. The plume has come ashore in our community. One of the challenges we have with the strong currents in John's Pass, it does end up bringing the plume closer to our shoreline, but we are hoping that with some cold spouts and some shifts of wind and current that we can see this red tide epidemic leave us here sometime. But we are still in close contact with representatives from the agencies I previously discussed. This resolution has us fall in line with other peer cities but also provides us the latitude to administratively take action if necessary to suspend the fees for parking in the future. And staff is recommending approval of Resolution 2018-16.
Any discussion from the board?
Yes, I'd like to comment, please. Yes, I've been closely watching it too along with the city manager and everybody else in the city, but I have certainly realized that we have lost 27 days of parking, okay? Parking revenue, a really very important revenue. And I think it's wonderful that we have been able to provide the support that we have for the business community and for the visitors to the beach because, of course, our residents don't pay for metered parking at all in Madeira Beach. But I do believe that it needs to, the waiver needs to go away now. We need to impose the parking and we need to not wait five days, I don't think, to impose it. I've noticed in my walking in the village that a lot of people, visitors, have stopped me and asked me if it's still being waived. They did today and over the weekend. And they were quite surprised that it was still waived, saying that all the other beaches, of course, still charge everything. So I think that we've done a really good effort and I really appreciate all the work that administration has done to do that. But I think that we need to, I think we've probably lost between $70,000 and $100,000 between, between, well, no, no, no. Excuse me, I'm talking. I think we have probably lost, yeah, I think, maybe $70,000, maybe not, but I'm basing it on perhaps the two preceding years, September 16th, September of 2016 and September of 2017, although the figures that I've received from the finance director shows that it was really more than that. I know that we certainly wouldn't have had the tourism that we have had during those years because we did have the red tide and then we had the hurricane just this past, you know, week. But I do think that it needs to go back into effect. I think we need to start charging. I think the signs, as I've noticed them, there's only like seven or eight of them, I believe, around, and I think we need to start charging them as soon as possible. Is that possible, city manager?
And madam mayor and vice mayor, this resolution effectively does that. When we previously put this agenda item together and then we postponed the meeting, there was going to be a five-day period to allow for, because what we were hoping is to get through Friday and Saturday with the local businesses so they can help advertise and market that parking was still free. But this resolution, as provided, I believe, starts the parking, the fees for parking effective tomorrow.
Okay.
So that will actually come into play. And the other, the other part, to your point, the finance director will provide some information later on this evening concerning the projected loss. The cost for waiving the parking, if we look at our historical data, is about $3,200 per day. So if you extrapolate that data, but on the other side, you can argue the point that with red tide, we don't know how many people would have parked or came anyway. So there's definitely two sides of that coin, but if all things considered, if it was going to be a perfect September with no issues, we lost $3,200 per day in revenue and the finance director will provide a more in-depth analysis later on as part of his presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, I had a question regarding South Beach. Knowing it's a staging ground, and this kind of rolls into the next item as well because of seafood festival, but are you working with Pinellas County and DRC and Little Moe's and all the equipment they have staged down there to, so that they know? I mean, I don't care if they leave some of it there, it's just the in and out for the buses and the other transportation services that that park is usually used for during the seafood festival to bring visitors in.
Yes, Commissioner, we're going to inform them about the events that we have upcoming and also as they have consistently staged equipment there to almost quarantine a certain area that they can utilize to keep their, their equipment there because we as a city benefit exponentially by having them have resources. So we want to provide a space for them, but they probably need to retract the spaces that they're currently occupying at John's Pass to accommodate the visitor traffic that we hope to see associated with the seafood festival and other activities we have going on at the pass.
Thank you.
I think we could open the floor for public comment at this time.
Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore Drive, Madeira Beach. What I've learned over time is that figures lie and liars figure, and we can take Ms. Weinstein and the public and understand where that's coming from. But when we look at the revenue that was lost due to not using the parking meters, it's no way, even at his figure, at 27 days, at 32, it's only $86,000. That's pretty easy to figure out. Not 100. But that's if it was full all the time. It wasn't. It wasn't being used. I went up and down that street, Gulf Boulevard, many times, parking lots are friggin' empty. There may be a few more down in John's Pass, but the other ones up and down the beach were pretty much empty. A lot of times, it was just the ambulance parked in it. And I find that deplorable that a representative of the city would come up with numbers like that and associate it with a revenue loss because they're not charging the parking meters. So that's just my point. We've had a lot of events. We've had Irma, we've had the red tide, we've had dead fish, everything, and people were just not showing up. So it's not just not using the parking meters. That was not the cause of the whole thing. Thank you.
Hi, Doug Andrews, 9141st Avenue in Madeira Beach. I just have one quick question. We just heard that parking revenue per day that was lost was $3,200. The seafood festival for four days is being charged $31,833. That's $8,000 a day. If it's $3,200 a day that we're losing, why are we charging the seafood festival $8,000 a day? Y'all don't have to jump at once. Anybody? Now, I know it's not question and answer, but really interesting question though, isn't it Maggie? Don't you think? You don't think it's interesting? $3,200 a day times four, $12,800, something like that? $31,883 a day, $83 you are charging the seafood festival, waiving for the seafood festival. It's not good math, guys.
Just, I don't know about John's Pass because I've just been at Archie Baldwin Park, but I can promise you, you've not lost very much money, okay? There are like a whole week where it was just maybe workers that were doing cleanup or the ambulance or the police there or my car and a cook. There's been days that it's maybe three or four or five cars. It's not been, it's been so, so empty. So we did not lose money because nobody was coming. I can promise you, I was there every day, all day long. And so, you know, so don't, don't take the, don't think of... And so, you know, so don't, don't take the, don't think of it as losing the money because you really didn't, because they wouldn't have been there anyway. Okay? So I'm just saying it firsthand, a person that's there every single day and I see it. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Public comment is now closed on that item. Any more discussion from the board? Okay.
Resolution 2018-16, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the City of Madera Beach, Pinellas County, Florida, rescinding Resolution 2018-15, providing for waiver of parking fees during red tide event and providing for an effective date.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2018-16, rescinding Resolution 2018-15, re-in stating parking fees.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any more discussion? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Blaine?
Yes. Next item is Resolution 2018-19, supporting the seafood festival in Madera Beach. City manager?
Madam Mayor, members of the Board of Commissioners, if I could have the city clerk read the title and the resolution in its entirety into the rec-
Resolution 2018-19, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Madera Beach, establishing its commitment and support of the seafood festival in perpetuity, reaffirming all previous actions to ensure long-term success and viability of the seafood festival and recognizing the event is a major economic and tourism driver for the city of Madera Beach. Whereas, on August 20th, 2018, and September 4th, 2018, the Board of Commissioners approved the contractual agreement between the John's Pass Merchants Association and the City of Madera Beach. And whereas, the City of Madera Beach promises that this event remains in the city for years to come and this board is resolute to working with the community to see this to fruition. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners unwaveringly supports the seafood festival now and for years to come and recognizes this event as a major special event that represents the longstanding history and traditions of the city of Madera Beach as a fishing village. And whereas, the city remains committed to ensuring that this event continues in perpetuity to ensure its viability, the city will assume whatever role is necessary to continue this event in the city. And whereas, the City of Madera Beach is committed to increasing the success of seafood festival while promoting tourism throughout the community. And whereas, the city is looking forward to continuing and building upon existing relationships with local area businesses to promote the seafood festival. And whereas, the city is committed to promote, market, advertise, and support the seafood festival in close cooperation and partnership with the business community, constituents, and community leaders to ensure that this event continues as a true community-based event. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners is committed to appointing a liaison from the board who serves as a spokesperson and contributing member to the planning committee or organizing committee. Therefore, be it resolved, this resolution shall take effect upon its passage and approval by the City of Madera Beach Board of Commissioners, introduced and adopted by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Madera Beach.
Madam Mayor and members of the board, this resolution memorializes the actions that were legislatively taken by the Board of Commissioners. It also reaffirms the longstanding commitment the city has to ensure that this event continues in perpetuity. I think through the entire process, the one thing that we can all look back and say that it reaffirmed how important this event is to the city and how it's important that each and every one of us work together to make sure that this community-based event that really hits on the tradition and is an identifying event for us as a community, remains here in Madera Beach and remains in John's Pass Village to continue to promote economic viability and tourism in the region. And so staff is committed to working with event organizers, promoters, community leaders, to ensure that this event continues on. And we will assume whatever role is necessary, working in close collaboration and under the direction of the Board of Commissioners. One of the things that staff is recommending as part of this resolution is that a board member be assigned to serve as the liaison with the John's Pass Village Association and work with whomever is going to assume the role of coordinating the event to effectively be the spokesperson or that liaison from the Board of Commissioners that will assist staff and event organizers and promoters to understand the desires of the board. One of the things that we want to do after the event takes place is really have an after-action discussion, what are lessons learned, how we can continue to improve on the success of the event and prepare for what the seafood festival looks like in 2019. Staff has had many productive conversations with representatives from the John's Pass Village Association and we believe that there's a lot of common ground and a lot of opportunities for us to see this event continue to grow and be the premier seafood event here in the state of Florida and hopefully one day in the country. They were already recognized as a premier event in past years and we want to continue on that success. So this resolution reaffirms, re-commits the city to moving forward in a productive fashion to make sure that this event, that is a stakeholding event in our community, remains as such. And staff is recommending approval of Resolution 2018-19.
I think this is a positive resolution. Is there, are there any more comments?
I'd just like to say that the seafood festival is an award-winning event that we have here in Madera Beach. Sunny's received awards on this. Last one was August 28th of 2017. It was the Henry Award. And that is the top award for any special events where, that you could receive. And this was given to us from, well, I shouldn't say us. It was given to Sunny, the Henry Award, for the John's Pass Seafood Festival event. And what a great job she did. Thank you, Sunny. I appreciate it.
I would just like to ask if the wording on the first "whereas", shouldn't that be changed from merchants to village or not? I mean, I don't know. I'm just, I just looked at it again, since it's a contract, a resolution.
It's a resolution that just states the board's intent, position on it, yes.
Just wanted to be right. Thank you.
Floor is now open for public comment. Yes, sir.
Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore Drive, Madera Beach. There's a couple of things that are pretty obvious and one that isn't. I really expected that four of the commissioners, one of them's missing and would have had bandages on them from how badly they got beat up over the last month. The other thing that's pretty obvious is that the wording didn't come from four of the commissioners. It came from Jonathan, who's a pretty darn good wordsmith. And one of the other things that's very obvious and evident is that this type of resolution should have been done a long time ago. And we would not have went through the mess that we have gone through in the last couple of months. Unfortunately, the newly-elected commissioners have a really, do a really good job of messing up good things in Madera Beach. Whether it be concerts, the Wednesday market, seafood fest, beating up old salts. You just can't get it right. I don't, I don't understand why. I don't understand what personal thing you have about having people enjoy themselves in Madera Beach. That's what we provide our residents, our visitors, our tourists, is someplace to go. And that's why many of us live here, even though we don't live in a condo that's sealed from the public. A lot of us live out amongst others. And we want to see these people come to our town and enjoy it as we do. But for some reason, there's four of you commissioners that just can't get it through your head that this city is for everybody, not just for you. Thank you.
Hi, Doug Andrews, 9141st here in Madera. This is, I keep rereading this and I can't keep, I can't keep but laughing. This is what we did every year, okay? We got together with them afterwards and we've, you know, always reestablished our connection with them, figured out what went wrong, what weren't right. So I mean, it's scary. We didn't need a resolution for 36 years. All of a sudden, I don't know what the common denominators here are, but for some reason, we do now. So it just, it actually saddens me because this has been going on for a long time and honestly with no problems at all. The second point is, it's complete hypocrisy for Commissioner Weinstein to be signing off on this. The third line on this is, whereas, the Board of Commissioners unwaveringly supports the seafood festival now. It's your district and you voted against it. How can you unwaveringly support it now? I mean, you've already voted no against it. So I'm hoping that that's what's going to be your vote now. And the last thing, and Mr. Hendricks brought this up earlier, and you know, Sunny deserves a huge apology from the city manager and mainly due to that press release that Kurt sent out. I mean, that was the act of a petulant 12-year-old child, not a city executive, okay? Now, in fairness, they went grovelling back and had meetings and tried to cover it up, but tried to make Sunny apologize for this. The only person in this room that deserves an apology is Sunny Flynn. Because all they had to do, okay, like a professional, all you would have had to do was pick up the gosh-for-sake telephone and call her instead of grandstanding like a child in front of the entire city, and that's what caused all this uproar. But no, that doesn't happen here, okay? Everybody's got to be the biggest guy on the block. I go, I believe you owe an apology, John. I really do. Okay? Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
Oh, we're on. Start the clock, don't forget. Stephen Barrett, 11975 Third Street East, Island of Treasure, 33706-4547. Seafood Festival is a zess pool. I mean, it brings out the worst of this whole entire county. It's expensive. It's like going to New York City. It's just this big zess pool you don't want to go to. It's trashy, it's expensive, it blocks up traffic. I don't like it, you know? Just how I feel. But you got Doug Andrews, Robert Preston, John Hendrick, Shane Crawford's cheerleaders. Let's give them a round of applause here, folks. Shane Crawford's cheerleaders. There we go. Mahalo.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Public comment is now closed. I would like to make a comment about, I've heard this about the concerts, that, you know, we're not allowing concerts or we're not approving concerts. No one's come to us to ask us to approve a concert. It is not our job, the commission's job, to go out and find music performers to come on our concert stage. But it is the recs department. So I just wish people would stop that chatter about, you know, we don't like concerts and we don't want any of that. And the same applies to the market. The vendors at the market chose on their own to leave Madera Beach. We didn't say no to them. So I just wanted to make those two things perfectly clear. Any more discussion from the board? No more discussion? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2018-19.
Second. Any more discussion? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges? Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes, for the Resolution 2018-19.
Mayor Blaine?
Yes. The next item under new business is ordinance 2018-14, amendment to the sign ordinance. Director Portal?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. What you have before you is the sign ordinance. You've had a chance to review that a couple of different times. It's being proposed for a number of reasons. To begin with, the Supreme Court in 2015 made decisions that cities are not allowed to regulate for the content of a sign. And so cities all over the country are having to go back and change language to make sure that their regulation is content neutral. And we've gone line by line through it and Ralph has reviewed it too and we've compared it to other sign codes that we know were well-crafted and have stood the test of challenges in court. And then we've also gone through to deal with some of the kind of housekeeping issues with the sign code. It's very difficult to use. It's got contradictory language and it's got some, some types of signs that aren't regulated and others that were, as I said, contradictory. Allowed privileges to some that it did not to others. So we've gone through and tried to clean up that to make it a little more usable. Now, last time we were here, and the reason there was a gap between the last meeting and this first reading, is you had asked the staff to go to the merchants and talk to them about the impacts down in John's Pass area in particular. Because as we all know, there are a lot of signs there and many of them don't meet the existing code. And there was concern that perhaps a standard sign code wasn't really meeting their needs anyway. So what I had proposed at the time, and we have begun talking to the merchants about, is to apply an overlay district that addresses more of the pedestrian-oriented signage that we need in those kind of districts. And we are scheduled, or at least planned, I don't think we have a set date, but we have planned to go back and meet with the Merchants Association again to get their input and to hammer out the details of that. And I've had numerous conversations with individual merchants in the area about the sign code. So we will continue to work on that. And so at this point, have brought it back to you. The language allowing for the overlays has been added in. And so that provides us the opportunity to go ahead and add, bring an overlay back to you once we have all the language in place. Finally, when we were here before, there was concerns about the proliferation of real estate signs in some locations, you know, especially with condos, sometimes if things are, there's a lot of units open, you end up with sign after sign after sign on a single property. And I've tried to address that in there by limiting the number of signs per business and then suggesting that they list multiple units on a single sign as opposed to separate signs. There are times we've been called because there may be 18 real estate signs in front of a single building. And at that point, you can't read any of them anyhow. But we'll continue to work with the- But we'll continue to work with the realtors and hammer out more details over time. So, when we come back to you with the overlay, we can address that in a little more detail, too. But the other issue was the flutter signs. We talked about that last time about, because we have a lot of trouble with those. They're popping up all over the place. They end up draping out into the street. They become worn and neglected and sometimes abandoned on the side of the road. Those signs, because they create movement and they block visibility, are outlawed in many cities because of traffic interference and safety issues, which are some of the issues that are addressed in the front of your, the new ordinance, indicating why we are regulating, our basis for regulation. So, what you had suggested, and we had input from Commissioner Douthier on this last time, was that we make the flutter signs a non-permitted sign, but give them some time to use up the signs they already have. And so, what I've proposed is that they be, become non-permitted signs and be taken down within six months of your approval of this ordinance. At that time, I think when we talked about it before, he said that they really fade out in about that amount of time anyway. They have to be replaced. That would give those who've invested in the signs an opportunity to use the ones they have and just not purchase them in the future.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
I have two questions. Director Portal, the, the digital sign that is currently on the surf style, no, yeah, surf style, where does that come into the picture in any of this? I didn't see it and I don't think it's...
No, those digital signs are not allowed under our current code.
Correct.
They would not be allowed under the, with the amendments at all. I would have to go back in history to determine how that was permitted to begin with because I think it was permitted during a time when we did not have permitting and code enforcement here at the city. We were under service either by Treasure Island or Penales County...
It was Penales County that inadvertently did it back in 2007 or '08.
That's, it's not the only thing. A lot of times, we have things that have been permitted by the county that didn't meet our code. They may have met somebody else's code and they, you know, that's the problem with having all of your permitting and code enforcement from outside. They are not going to read through your code every time if they've got a whole bunch of different jurisdictions to administer.
How, then, are you responding to anyone who wants a digital sign down there, except that it's not part of the ordinance? But I have people just asking me, well, how come I can't have it if they have it?
Well, because the city, the city's never obligated to do something illegally because it's done illegally in the past.
Certainly not.
We don't have to continue a mistake, so...
Is there any recourse then? No? I mean, it's just there?
We, well, as I said, I need to look into the exact history. You can notify people that the sign was permitted inappropriately, and then I can work with Ralph on how to handle that situation. We can come back to you with more specifics. We do have a lot of code enforcement and careful code enforcement to do because the sign code in particular hasn't been enforced, especially not in the Johns Pass area. There's signs everywhere. And even the merchants have been complaining about it. It's a lot of clutter. So, we want to let people ahead of time know that we were going to begin enforcement and these are the circumstances, or these are what, the things that are permitted to you and give them some time to clean up and ask their questions. And so, we'll come back to you explaining how we're going to manage those situations. I'll get with Ralph on that. Excuse me.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, Linda. Okay, we'll open, the public comment is open.
Hendricks, 569 on Normandy Road. My question is, I wouldn't think this is going to affect political signs. I would think pretty much political, because they end up all up and down the street. But I don't think you can encumber political signs during an election. I'd like a clarification on that if I could.
Sure. One of the reasons that this amendment is taking place actually is because of political signs. The way it reads now, because we cannot regulate for content, if we allow anybody to put a political sign, for instance, in their yard to support an issue or candidate, then anybody in town also has the same right to do that and they can put anything on that sign they want. Of course, we, we, you know, caution people about things like obscenity and such, but, but the point is to allow everybody a freedom of expression sign at that time. But we can regulate the time limit and the size of those signs and also the placement there to be put in public rights way. We go around and pick them up when they're in public rights way and then have people come and retrieve them from the City Hall.
But you have a number of places, high-profile places, 150th and whatnot. You may have 50 signs on one piece of property, not on the right-of-way. I don't think there's a problem with that. I don't like it. I don't like the looks of it. But I don't think you can stop people from having their political sign out, even if it says, "Save the whales," you know? That's a political statement.
Right. They are allowed to have a political statement and we don't regulate for that content. We can state how, how many or what size per piece of property. We are able to control for that to some degree. Size in particular, and we've enforced on that before, but it has to be very consistent.
Yeah, I don't know, so how many, how many can you have on a piece of property? Is there a regulation of signs per millennial foot along the right-of-way or...
I would need to, need to go through that and find the exact spot here if you could give me a moment.
John, perhaps if you have more questions, you could contact her after the meeting.
I'd be glad to go with you.
Okay, all right, good. I think it's, it's something everybody needs to know as the election gets closer.
Sure.
There are going to be signs for everybody all over, but...
I will be working with Mr. Presser to make sure that we get something out on all of the media sites explaining what the, the situation is and the requirements for political signs. That would help a lot because up until this point, every time I've been here, there's been any kind of an issue to be voted on. We end up picking up a lot of signs all over the place. Look at that out.
You'll be next. Hello, members of the board. My name is Alex Pucleau. My address is 96186 Court North, Largo, Florida. I am here to support the ordinance number 2018-14, amending Chapter 102, the signs. This new ordinance will help the city and the old existing ordinance in three different ways, as Ms. Porter stated. First one is content neutrality. These new amendments will make it so that a person's freedom of speech and freedom of expression is not hindered. The second method is usability. These amendments will make it so that an average person can read these ordinance and understand what it's saying by cutting out things that are unnecessary and be rewarding the phrases involved. Usability is a big part of this ordinance. These new amendments clearly define the purpose of this ordinance. These ornaments, as you know, are intended to maintain and enhance the visual and aesthetic environment to increase the city's abilities to attract sources of economic development and growth, including enhancing the tourism industry, all while regulating the different types of signs within the city to maintain safety for the public and to keep the city free from clutter. The last method is flexibility for overlays in specific regulated areas, areas like Johns Pass, which has signs all over the place, and they need to be regulated. So, in conclusion, I would like to give the board my recommendation to, if you will hear it, to go ahead and vote yes on ordinance number 2018-14, amending Chapter 102, signs. And continue to the second reading, and I would like to thank the board and wish you all a good evening.
Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore Drive, Madeira Beach. I really don't see any problem with the flutter signs if they're on their personal property. I just, I just, that's their property if they want to put a flutter sign up. That's their choice. We shouldn't be saying they can't put a flutter sign up. I think that's wrong. And then the other part about the digital signs, I mean, that is a very effective way of notifying people of what you have in store for them, what they can see, what you're selling, what you're feeding, whatever the case may be, and it changes quickly. You see these signs up and down, all, and some of them are billboard size in the digital signs. So, I'm not understanding why we're preventing digital signs in Madeira Beach. I just don't understand that. Is it state law? Is it county law?
Madam Mayor.
You could go ahead and answer that question.
Okay. This makes it local law, and it's not unusual. Many well-regulated cities prevent digital signs and any movement-oriented signs because they do create a traffic hazard. They are distracting to drivers and that's the main thing. Also, they give off light. There's a certain amount of light pollution or, and reflection that many complain about, especially in tight urban areas. But it's not at all unusual. It's never been permitted except for a one-square-foot sign, which appears to have been written at a time when banks used to have the time or temperature underneath their sign and it would allow that. The only sign in town that's, that is legally a moving image or moving light sign is the one in front of City Hall because it's used for emergency management and public information purposes.
And I just, I just think if you're in a business district, I think you could separate it between residential and business, but I think if you're in a business district, to restrict businesses from using a digital sign, I can see restricting a size, but just totally restricting digital signs, I think, is totally wrong. And it's the wrong way to, to encourage businesses to do well.
Does anybody else wish to speak on this topic? Public comment is now closed. Any more discussion from the board?
Resolution number 2018-14, An Ordnance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 102, signs, providing for conflict, providing for separability, and providing for an immediate effective date. First reading, for the record, first reading needs to come off the title. I don't believe that belongs there.
Also, for the record, Madam Mayor, that's ordinance number 2018-114, not resolution.
Any more discussion from the board? Can we have a motion?
Yes, I will make a motion to move that Ordinance 2018-14, Amendment to Sign Ordinance's first reading be accepted on first reading.
On a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
No.
Mayor Black?
Our next item is the interlocal agreement with Penales County for FEMA map amendment
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, as you all know, we've been telling you for a while that FEMA has proposed new maps. Those maps have used, are using far more sophisticated data than was used to produce the maps in 2003, which was the last update. They are using LiDAR now, and they also have run a series of 300 potential storms over every area to see what the impacts would be for not only sea level rise, but also wave run-up. Because of that, there are many areas that used to be designated as A zones that are now being moved into V zones and will be more heavily regulated for types of development. And then they're also overlaying a new designation on the maps. It's a line that in, that designates which areas that are in A zones are subject to low to moderate wave action or wave run-up. And so, there are a large number of parcels in the city of Madeira Beach that could be affected by that. And the impact is going to be that residential properties in those areas will be regulated as if they were V zones, which means that houses that we have been approving up to this point with enclosed ground floors will not be able to be fully enclosed anymore. At best, they could have breakaway walls, but they will not be entirely enclosed. And there are new heavier standards for non-residential properties in the type of construction that, and the engineering that goes into the properties as well. We don't know at this time whether in the long run that will affect insurance rates, but we do know that those two changes, either placing something in a coastal A zone or changing them from A to B, will definitely impact how people use their property and that there are many properties throughout the city that are affected by those changes. Now, FEMA is in a, we're in a process right now where we can appeal the findings, but they will only accept appeals that are based on the same level of science they have used to produce the maps to begin with. And most of us don't even know people who can do that kind of math and science. So, this, the county has retained and, a company, an expert company in mapping and reading this kind of data, and asked them to review all the parcels in the county that are being proposed for change and to find areas where there may be grounds for appeal. And they've asked the local governments to enter into an agreement with, an interlocal agreement with them, that if that consultant finds there are areas of appeal in Madeira Beach, we would use that data and we'd pay them for whatever effort they put into representing us if we approved it. So, the, the city would have to see what they found and decide whether they wanted to pay the consultant to represent them with FEMA to try to get changes made to the maps. At this point, the city manager has recommended that you, that you approve this interlocal agreement for a spending amount of up to $5,000. The full cost, the county projected for us, if we took advantage of all of the consulting services, would be more in the neighborhood of $23,000. We don't think that we would be advising you to take advantage of all of that anyway because a lot of, a big chunk of that was just their coming and doing a kind of a big show and meeting about how they did their work. And so, at this point, as I say, the city manager is recommending that we do enter into the interlocal agreement so that we have the opportunity, if we see fit, once we've reviewed the information, we have the opportunity to use the consultant, if you vote to do that.
I went to a couple of those meetings and it was very interesting because it was amazing amount of data that they now have that they didn't before, and so it changes everything. everything. It was very interesting.
Yes, it does. And as we saw with the effects of the hurricane on Mexico Beach, that wave action is, is what, you know, pulled up the roads, most notably, and knocked down buildings. It's not just the amount of water that comes in, but that even it's a foot and a half wave on top of the surge that, that causes most of the damage.
And Madam Mayor, if I may, the way in which the interlocal agreement is structured, that in the event that we anticipate that there are going to be additional costs associated with this, this item would come back to the board, and at that point, we would be able to provide you a full briefing as to why do we believe we need to move forward in this process, and there probably will be conversations with our land use attorney once we get some additional information from FEMA. But we thought it was too premature and a, effectively a very complicated process to commit the city to anything on and above that $5,000 mark, and we feel that we're comfortable with that, but we can anticipate this coming back before this board for future action.
Thank you.
I'd like to comment or ask Linda, too. The interlocal agreement is probably predicated on the five-year study that, that was done. I attended also a FEMA, you know, one of those FEMA things a few weeks ago in South Pasadena, and this, does this have, is this a result of that?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was asking.
You attended the big meeting where you got all the detail explained to you.
Correct.
It's kind of mind-numbing, I know, but they were, the purpose in that was FEMA was going around explaining to everybody how they use the science, and
Right.
Most of us would just shake our head a lot, but it was way too much. But yeah, they used a lot more sophisticated data than they had before, and yes, this is...
Right, and they did base it on, they said it was a five-year study, so I was just curious if this was...
We'll open the floor for public comment now. Floor is now closed. Any more discussion from the board? Can we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement between Pinellas County and the city of Madeira Beach for provision of preliminary floodplain insurance maps.
Second. Any more discussion? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next, we have resolution 2018-17, amendment one, additional homestead exemption.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Commission, this item before you is an item that staff previously communicated about a legislative initiative that is being proposed to the voters in November that would grant an additional exemption for properties within the range of $100,000 to $125,000. This exemption is not effectively a tax break or a tax cut. It is really a tax shift, and the fiscal impact that Pinellas County is anticipating to see in the event, in the event that this passage is about $42 million in lost revenue, and that, of course, is compounding. The city of Madeira Beach will, anticipates losing approximately $54,000 of general revenue associated with the additional exemption in 2020. Staff is recommending that the board communicate to the Florida League of Cities and members of the legislature our displeasure with a tax structure that is already complicated, and this amendment continues the complications associated with this, this amendment. Also, I think it's important to note that approximately 70% of Pinellas County properties will receive no benefit from this exemption. 7% will receive a partial exemption, and 23% would receive a full exemption. So effectively, it does not provide for tax cut for all residents, because if you're not within that $100,000 to $125,000 range, you don't benefit from that entire exemption. You benefit from a, a portion of it. The other part to note is that this was not asked for by the voters. This was purely put on the ballot by members of Tallahassee, the legislative delegations and politicians, that thought it was appropriate to go after the revenue stream that helps to fund local governments. They did not do anything to, to impact their local revenue streams or their revenue streams, which is primarily sales tax. So staff has crafted a resolution that we would like to share with Florida League of Cities and other government entities to encourage folks to become knowledgeable about amendment one and understand that it is not a tax break for all Floridians, and it creates even more complications with an already complicated tax code that we have here in the state of Florida. And this time, staff recommends approval of resolution 2018-17, and for the city clerk to read the title into the record.
Resolution 2018-17, a resolution of the city of Madeira Beach, Pinellas County, Florida, communicating the impact of amendment one, if approved by the voters at the general election on November 6, 2018, and providing for an effective date.
The floor is now open for public comment. Floor is closed. Any more discussion? Can we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, a move to approve resolution 2018-17, amendment one, additional homestead exemption. The letter being in support of the Florida League of Cities initiative, and this is resolution, is approval, for, upon approval of the...
One second. Any more discussion? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next item is parking machine revenue comparison for 2017 and 18. Director Pierce.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, there was a question as far as how we stand as far as the parking monies received through coinage and credit card for this past year, and we're in the process of closing out the FY 2018 year, so we have a good, good opportunity to, to have data to communicate some of these figures. The, for 2018 year, the total received was $2,097,960 compared to FY 2017, which was So it's close, represents a 3.2% increase. The one thing that's not included in those figures is parking tickets and revenue that we get. That's a separate line item, aside from those cash and collections from the machines. And FY 2017, we received a total of $149,000 as far as ticket, ticket writing, tickets and ticket collections. And in 2018, that dropped to $83,000. The reason for that being basically is with the new machines, we didn't want to write as many tickets. We gave some people a little leeway because we were more in the educational type, type of atmosphere with people using the machines, and we wanted to educate them. So we weren't that eager to write tickets, but, and that's why that dropped a little bit. The, the question about the, and this came up earlier as far as the money, revenue that we did not receive for the, basically the 26 days that the red tide impacted us, and that we had the resolution suspending charging for parking. Basically, what I have to go by is just prior information, prior year, and estimating or guesstimating what we could have received, and there's just a lot of factors to come into play here. But when I looked at the same time period, those number of days in 2017, that total was $123,316 or $317. And then the same period of time for 2016 was $124,511. So with those two, the average is basically $123,900 that, and when you look at those two years in the past during those timeframes, that, of revenue that we could have received. Now, I will say this, September, the beginning and end of September this year, this is before red tide came, the first couple of weeks were, were very, very slow. And I don't think that you can compare this September and the beginning of this September to previous years. It's hard to do that. So it was slow, but if I had to guess and, and give you what we, revenue that we did not receive, a very conservative range would be between $100,000 and $124,000. So somewhere between that range, that's the revenue that, that we're missing here. Based on, again, the, the two years that we have actual hard, hard data.
And Madam Mayor, Members of the Board, if I may, this particular analysis that staff put together was trying to quantify exactly what we believe the loss of revenue is for the city. Now, prior to this particular challenge that we've experienced with red tide, our parking numbers and revenue has outpaced what previous years have called for. A portion of that is attributable to the 50 cent increase and then other factors of people just utilizing the spaces. So I think, once we go through a process to look at this in a couple of months and we get back to some type of form of normalcy, we can really be able to calculate what the actual impact will be, because right now, we're just looking at a snapshot. In the event that we see numbers grow and continue on the pace, you may find yourself in a situation where the fiscal impact is a net neutral or $10,000, or not an impact at all, depending on how much activity we have at our beaches, et cetera. So the finance director did some, some research and tried to put a number to what the, the impact of the red tide is. But again, it boils down to, when we experience the red tide, how do we know that the numbers or the experience that we experienced in 2017, 2016 would have been the same? Because if we were still having people, the only way we would be able to find out what the impact would have been is to keep the meters on and then see what the, the data provides for us, and then that would have been a true calculation to determine what the loss of revenue is. Nonetheless, staff is going to continue to monitor and see, you know, what we can do in the future, but it, it goes back to the other conversations that we had as part of the budget process. If we find a situation where we have an environmental issue for a significant amount of time, it does have an adverse impact on our ability to fund government, and we're very reliant on that revenue stream. So diversifying our revenue stream and having that conversations as we go into fiscal year 2020 budget is going to be important, because if you have a situation similar to that in the Panhandle or what have you, to have to plug a $2 million-plus hole is going to be extremely difficult for us as an agency, and so we have to understand, we have to have a healthy fund balance, but also we have to look at our revenue streams and, and things we can do to reduce costs, look for other additional revenues, and to continue to track that, to see what we can do moving forward to safeguard the organization against these particular situations.
Hey, Madam Mayor, Commissioners, I just wanted to say one more thing off, off the subject. I did provide you what was requested of, of us, not just this year, but last year, is the budget, a total by object, and we did provide you a copy of that. Commissioner Delford was pretty adamant that he, that he wanted that, and it, there is a lot of benefit to this analysis, and actually, to the city manager's point, if you look at the salaries and wages for just the general fund, that totals 2.4 million in this analysis, which is almost pretty close to our ad valorem that we received. So kind, what that kind of tells you is how reliant the city is on collecting fees and over and above the ad valorem, and we are, we are very much dependent on fees and the collection of fees, and that's what that, that shows you. So really, I'm glad that Commissioner Delford asked for this. We're going to put this as far as a, a part of our budget process and information to you, because I think it is very valuable.
Thank you.
Yes, I wanted to ask Director Pierce something. If you look at the, the parking meter revenues, okay, the two reports that you gave us, okay, I just want to make sure I'm reading it right, and I think we did go over it, but from September, for instance, from September 18th till October the, to October the 17th of 2018, okay? Am I correct that the, well, you just tell me, what was the revenue for that period, okay? September 18th to October the 17th, was it $71,533?
Is that, is that the breakdown that I gave you?
Yes, sir, the parking meter revenue, and it's the...
Right.
This particular sheet, and it does show September, September 18th, okay? And I asked you if it was for 2018, okay? And yes, you agreed, and it was $71,000 was the revenue, okay? And then from the period in October, okay, the, the October 17th to November 16th, okay, it had increased from, increased to $128,682. Are those, is that figure correct?
Right.
Okay, because I was just curious, because I did notice certainly since, even though we have waived the parking meters until now, which is October 15th, obviously, but I did notice that beginning October the 1st was when you could really see the...
Right, and we, we talked about that this morning, and actually, I think while we were in September with the red tide, we were actually okay, because traditionally, September is one of the worst months that we had
Correct, right.
For collecting revenue. But once we crossed into October, that's when it changed.
Okay.
Because October is when we typically start to, we dip down in September, but October, we start to go back up, and even after last year with Hurricane Irma, which hit in September, that only lasted about a week, and, and, and once October hit, we were back to normal.
Okay, okay, because I did notice, and then I went back to 2017, or 2016, I'm sorry, to see where, where we were there, and it was also a very high figure, so thank you very much.
We'll open it for the public comment on this item.
Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore Drive, Madeira Beach. Revenues, I just wanted to mention that we have Marina property, and if we had a boat storage building, we would be making a lot of revenue for people to store their boats. So it would offset a lot of the things that you're talking about, that if you have a down on parking, people are still storing their boats. So I think that would be something that this commission could really look at about having on that facility, is a boat, boat storage facility. You know, you'd have to build it, you'd probably could get a, a grant, or get a low-interest loan to do, to do such a thing, to build that, and then pay the loan and make revenue, and then once it's paid off, make a lot of revenue. That's something to keep the city going, and I think that's really something you ought to look at. And, you know, I was just curious, Ms. Weinstein? Weinstein, you've done this quite a few times. You get a packet. And I'm just wondering why you don't pick up the phone and ask one of, or Mr. Evans or one of the other people these questions, so you don't spend a lot of time up here debating numbers. I'm just curious. It seems like it would be much easier on everybody. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Public comment is now closed on this item. Next, we have reports and correspondence. First, we have the city commission. And I do have a report. Just wanted to, I read all these comments on social media and Nextdoor and other places, and I get really tired of reading the information that is just not correct. I believe it's really a small group of residents who are stirring the pot. And I welcome positive criticism and opinions, but like I said, there is an awful lot of misinformation that is out there. And I just want to go through a few items to refute what is being said on social media. One of the things someone said was, who and what organization is on their hit list? And what has the commission accomplished? As to the innuendo... Can I keep going? As to the innuendo, that the commission has a hit list of organizations, that's just ridiculous. And as far as whatever you accomplished, actually, it's quite a bit if you look back over the time we've been here. We've established goals and had a vision statement as well as a mission statement. We were able to get a citizen input back by re-establishing city committees. And the commission, on a monthly basis, votes on numerous city initiatives that have benefited our community. They have stopped, they've decided to stop supporting the water taxi and service until it got on its feet. This statement is true, but it's also true, they had plenty of time to get back on their feet. They don't tell the whole story when people say those things. The bottom line is, the water taxi in this city just doesn't make logistics sense. If it takes an hour and a half to get from McDonald's to Johns Pass Village, that's not a taxi. It's really a scenic boat ride. Four members of the city of Madeira Beach, this is another comment, four members of the city of Madeira Beach Commission, formerly known as Madeira Beach United, founders of SUD Group, managed to delay the beautification of the downtown area of the city and reduce much-needed revenue to the city. First of all, let's get our facts straight. Although four of the commissioners were members of Madeira Beach United, three of those commissioners were not founders of Madeira Beach United. As far as delaying the beautification of the downtown area of our city, that's a far-reaching statement. What Madeira Beach United did do was to bring down the height of two of the developments that were expected to be 11 and 12 stories tall. And we brought them down to a more acceptable height and density for our small downtown area. I've heard that people say that Madeira Beach United was against development, and that's certainly not true. Madeira Beach United was pro-development. And lastly, someone said, "The current city commission is on a witch hunt. These are personal vendettas on a list created by puppeteers that control most of the commission." Witch hunt, I have no idea what that person's talking about. I personally have no vendettas. And I don't know anything about a list created by puppeteers that control most of the commission. This is purely gossip. I know people have said that former Commissioner Elaine Poe is pulling my strings. However, no one is pulling my strings, least of all Elaine Poe, who up until a month ago, I have not spoken to or heard from since before the election. Please, Madeira Beach, let's stop and think before posting on social media and try to get our facts straight before we post. I really believe that, at the end of the day, we all want the same thing. So let's try to come together for the sake of our city. Thanks. Anyone else have anything to report?
I do. I wanted to ask the city manager if you could hit your volunteer list, the one that came from...
Survey.
The survey, yeah. Johns Pass is in need of a very major cleanup. And it's not just the surface trash. It's the trash that's embedded in all the bushes, the napkins, the ice cream cups, the water bottles, the beer bottles. It's everything down there. And if you could get some of those people to come out and set up a time, I mean, I would be happy to go out there and pick up trash. But I would really like to get this done before the seafood festival and before all the vendors move in. So at least they're starting with a clean slate, and we can help Johns Pass shine a little bit more than with the garbage situation and the trashy situation.
Okay.
And also, if you could get it where, you know, if they would come down there at 7:00 in the morning during the event, and we could clean up from the night before, because I know, you know, papers fly around, napkins fly around, and it would just help to put our best foot forward in the presentation of the pass.
Certainly, we can, I will get with our public information staffer and work on putting out a piece to start collecting names and create a sign-up list, and we can definitely get that coordinated prior to the seafood.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, I would like to report that I attended the Florida League of Cities Institute for Elected Municipal Officers. It was a three-day course designed exclusively for newly-elected officials. And I know that all of y'all have done that in the past. And I did it. It was very interesting. It was held in Tampa. There were meetings ranging from city budgets, just how do you deal with social media, to just all different kinds of municipal topics. Lynn Tipton, who is with the Florida League, did an excellent job. And there were 42 of us there from all different cities in Florida to discuss a lot of the providing, providing for, I think the league says it best when they say that municipalities are formed to provide and protect the citizens within that community by providing, you know, services, city water, sewer, all those types of things. So it was an excellent session, and I look forward to going to the next one in next April 2019. Thank you.
Any more reports from the commission? City Attorney?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
City Manager?
I do have to say, the pictures of the board members look great in the back of the room. So I just wanted to commend you on your smiling faces.
One person's opinion.
That's an inside joke. It was a tough process to get it coordinated. I thought it was going to cost me my job at some points. But nonetheless, we got it. We got it.
I did notice those when I came in. Pretty broad.
Yeah.
Were you more prominent than I thought that would be? I noticed you skipped that little process.
That concludes my remarks for this evening.
Thanks. Madam Mayor, city clerk?
I do. Tuesday, October 23, 2018, at 6:00 PM, will be another charter amendment for them. And I'll get the notices out tomorrow to everybody. And also, I had on the back of the table tonight is a copy of the notice for the election that had to go out 20 days before the election, listing all the charter amendments. It's on the back of the table if anybody would like.
Anything else? Meeting is adjourned at 7:34.